Button at the of your Zoom screen and choose the Spanish option to hear the forum in that language. Welcome to the Louisville City Council Candidate Forum, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Boulder County. My name is Carolyn Cutler. I am a proud member of the League and I am pleased to serve as moderator for tonight's forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. For 100 years, we have encouraged, we have informed, encouraged, informed and active participation in government and influenced public policy through education and advocacy. To remain nonpartisan, the League never supports or opposes political candidates or parties. Our candidate forums are typically held in person with a moderator, candidates, volunteers and audience.
Carolyn, sorry to interrupt. Would you pause a moment so that Rosebel can give the instructions in Spanish? And then we'll go ahead and continue with your introduction.
Want me to start back or wait?
Yeah, would you please just start with the introduction and then Rosebel can take over?
All right. Welcome to the Louisville City Council Candidate Forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Boulder County. My name is Carolyn Cutler. I am a proud member of the League and I am pleased to serve as moderator for tonight's forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. For 100 years, we have encouraged, informed and active participation in government and influenced public policy through education and advocacy.
Sorry, go ahead and pause there. Let's let Rosebel give the instructions so I can move her into the interpretation channel. Okay, Rosebel, go ahead.
To remain nonpartisan, the League never supports or opposes political candidates or parties. Our candidate forums are typically held in person with the moderator, candidates, volunteers and audience members all in the same place. But to observe public health best practices, we're participating online. Do I, do I want to give Rosebel a chance?
Let's just pause for about 30 seconds here and we'll let everyone switch over into the other group. So just give me one minute. Okay, go ahead and continue.
For, for this forum, we are pleased to have Spanish language interpreter, Rosebel Rice, interpreters, Rosebel Rice and Nicholas Arizaga, providing the Spanish translation. According to FCC policy, candidate forums must be broadcast in their entirety except by media reporting on events. Candidates or their staff are asked not to record this event. Non- Nonpartisan municipal elections for the mayor and city council of Louisville take place in odd numbered years. And this year's municipal election will take place on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021. The city consists, the city council consists of the mayor and six council members. Council members are elected for four-year staggered terms, two people from each of the city's three wards. The mayor is elected at large for a four-year term. On the ballot for this election are three city council seats, one from each ward and one ballot issue referred by council. Ward one is a contested race with two candidates and wards two and three are uncontested. But we have, we have asked the ward two and three candidates to join us tonight. The format for tonight's forum will be as follows. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement. We will then begin with the questions which have been submitted electronically online by the community to the League. Questions have been reviewed by our League of Women Voters volunteer screeners and will be addressed by all candidates. We will ask the candidates as many questions as time permits. Each candidate will have up to one minute and possibly 90 seconds to answer the question. As the moderator, I will announce the time allotted to answer each question. If it, if it is different than the expected one minute, our Zoom timer will help you stay on the track, on track. We will finish with one-minute closing statements. Tonight's forum participants include, in ballot order, running in the contested race for Ward One, Keith Keller and Chris Lay. Maxine Most is running uncontested for Ward Two and Kyle Brown is running uncontested to represent Ward Three. Now to the opening statements and questions. Again, unless otherwise noted, each candidate will have one minute to respond. Please keep watch for the timekeeper's signal at the 15-second mark and end when your time is up. If you are mid-second, mid-sentence when your time is up, please promptly finish that sentence so we can move on to the next candidate. For opening statements, we will begin with candidate Lay, I'm sorry, with candidate Keller. And it's on you now. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Keith Keller. I'm a retired engineer. I've been a resident of Louisville for 16 years. My family, my wife and three children, and I'm running for city council Louisville Ward One. Thank you.
Candidate Lay.
Good evening. My name is Chris Lay. I am council member who is representing Ward One at the current time running for reelection. I've lived in Louisville for 27 years now, raised two children here, but through public schools. And my wife lives here as well. We lawyer by training and problem solver. The reason I'm running is really three. One is that I want to preserve what is special about the small-town character and welcoming small-town character that we have here. I want also to help promote environmental sustainability going forward. We are starting to do that better and better. That's something we need to move forward with and want to promote the economics of the town.
Thank you. Candidate Most.
Hi, thank you for, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters in the city of Louisville for inviting us here tonight. My name is Maxine Most and I'm running for Ward Two City Council. I'm a 15-year resident of Louisville. I moved here in November 2006 with my then toddler daughter, who is now a junior at Monarch High School. And I've had a 30-year career in emerging technology, providing strategic business development and marketing services to startups, scale-ups and leading industry players, including Fortune 500s. And I've spent that time basically applying innovation and technology to solve intractable problems. I founded and launched multiple companies, including my own internationally recognized strategic consultancy where I'm now employed. And I'm really looking forward to answering your questions tonight and giving you a little bit of a sense of who I am and what I believe about how we can make our town an even better place to live. Thanks.
Thank you. Candidate Brown.
Thank you, Carolyn, and thanks again to the Women, League of Women Voters for having us. My name's Kyle Brown. I am a current council member for Ward Three and am a lifelong public servant. I've spent my career serving the people of Louisville and the United States at the state, federal and local levels. I am committed to making Louisville the most environmentally sustainable and economically vital city. And I will continue to fight for economic vitality and environmental sustainability if reelected. I have been a lifelong member of the Louisville community. My parents moved here when I was one, many years ago, with nothing more than what they had in a U-Haul truck and bought their first home here. And it's, it's that sort of, as we raise our children here, it's that kind of spirit and that opportunity that I want to have for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will begin the questioning. We will start the questioning with candidate Lay answering this question. Senate Bill 21256 overturned a previous state law that prohibited cities from enacting gun control legislation. SB 21256 allows cities to establish their own gun regulations as long as they are not less restrictive than state statutes. Are you willing to support gun safety initiatives? And if so, what initiatives do you believe are important to keep our community safe from gun violence?
Thank you very much. This is an exciting new development, I think, for a number of communities. I, I think what I would say is I am willing to support those kinds of initiatives. I think quite a number of those initiatives are currently being offered and will be offered in the state legislature. I think those are ones that will, will be helping to enforce locally and I want to make sure our enforcement is equipped to do that. I think locally, I want to support training efforts. I'm absolutely in favor of background checks and closing gun, gun show loopholes. And I think we can work with our state partners to try to improve gun safety locally.
Thank you. Candidate Most.
I agree with Chris. It is an exciting new development and I would like to see Louisville put restrictions on any kind of open or concealed carry in our public parks, in our public spaces, in our downtown area. Any place where families and children are congregating and playing, because I don't think there is any reason to have anyone with a gun anywhere in any of those locations.
Thank you. Candidate Brown.
Thank you, Carolyn. Yeah, I'm, I'm a strong supporter of gun safety measures and gun safety initiatives. A big, I'm a big supporter of banning both bump stocks as well as assault weapons. I believe in safe storage and would like to make sure that guns continue to be safely stored in homes. I believe that the state level red flag law is a real lifesaver for many people and allows, you know, folks in, who are in mental health crisis to, to, to be out of harm's way when it comes to lethal means for suicide and other things. Expanding background checks, as, as council member Lay mentioned, is, is an important part of any gun safety measure. And I would like to continue to think about ways that we could either license gun shops and, and put restrictions on open carry in places where families are, are, are basically children and families are.
Thank you. Question two. We will start this question with candidate Most. What do you understand about the environmental impact of single-family residential development, especially as it relates to climate change? And how can Louisville make up for years of low-density, low-transit-use development at the same time creating more affordable housing so that all of our workers can live in our community? How important is this to you as a candidate among your other priorities?
Wow, that's a lot packed into one question. I will say that I do believe that Louisville has a lot of work to do to be a truly inclusive community and not just with offering low-income housing options, but also offering housing options to our seniors as well as to folks with different abilities and disabilities. And I do believe there are opportunities in certain areas of our community. I would say particularly along the McCaslin Corridor where we could really do some innovative things around increasing the vitality of our community and live-work-play environments where we could also have some increased density, which would give us some flexibility to provide alternatives in housing. I think it's very important and I'm firmly committed to this, but I'm also firmly committed to make sure that the play and work areas are developed before we allow developers to put in more housing. So we don't end up with situations where we get housing and then we don't get the retail and the business development that we need.
Thank you. Candidate Brown.
Thank you, Carolyn. Yeah, I'm a, the interplay between sustainability and affordable housing is an important one. And I'm a big supporter, first of all, of making Louisville environmentally sustainable. And I've worked to protect open space as well as to make sure that electric vehicle charging stations are in new development and that new developments, buildings within new developments are LEED certified. I'm also a big supporter of affordable housing and have been a leader on council in terms of pushing forward an inclusionary zoning law, which holds developers accountable for making sure that a certain percentage of their, their residential development is affordable. So we will continue to, you know, the more that we can provide for affordable housing within our community means less commute times and less climate impact. And that's the, that's the key and the reason why affordable housing is so important for a sustainable environment.
Thank you. Candidate Keller.
Yes, thank you. Affordable housing is a crisis in our community, just like every other community in America these days. I believe that we can minimize the impact of urban sprawl and to the environment. If we do a couple of things like repurposing vacant commercial properties for, for affordable housing units or allowing, changing zoning laws to allow current residents to build accessory dwelling units, like in their backyards or in above their garage or something like that. That wouldn't add to urban sprawl and maximize the number of units available for, for renting or subletting or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Lay.
Thanks. You've rolled in quite a number of, of issues that are all very much related. We have had a very strong emphasis on single-family dwellings in Louisville and we are almost built out. And so we've got some creative ways that we're going to have to, to work to try to create and implement strategies for affordable housing. I, I think it's, it's pretty clear that, you know, single-family homes were often lead to single drivers and creation of additional pollution and fouling in the environment. But I think we can, there are places in our community, particularly transportation-oriented development near our bus stops and near Highway 36 that we can incentivize the folks who eventually will redevelop that. And we can do things in the meantime to incentivize local folks to improve affordable housing in Louisville. Thanks.
Thank you. Question number three. If elected, we're, we'll begin that one with candidate Brown. If elected, how would you work to communicate and collaborate with agencies from Boulder County and other cities?
Thanks, Carolyn. Yeah, collaboration across different cities within our county and even across counties is extremely important. You know, Louisville is just one community. And while I, I love it and have been a lifelong member of the community, I, I know that in order for us to be, to make meaningful, take meaningful climate, climate action or take meaningful action on many different issues, we're going to have to work with other cities in, in our county and elsewhere. I've been proud to be a part of the consortium of cities since I've been on council and working together with the county commissioners as well as the towns of Longmont, Superior and elsewhere to make meaningful strides on affordable housing, on economic development and others. So I will continue to, to use my position on council if reelected to reach out to, to folks in other communities and work with them to enact policy changes that benefit Louisville.
Thank you. Candidate Keller.
Yes, thank you. If elected, I would definitely work with the other communities in, in Boulder County to try and collaborate and come up with joint ideas that would benefit all the communities in the county. And maybe we can leverage ideas and work together to, to build solutions to our problems. As a, as an engineer, I worked mainly project management issues. So I'm, I'm used to working with collaborating other organizations, multiple organizations together and come into a consensus to solve difficult, this technical problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Most.
Yeah, I think some of the biggest problems that are facing our community are facing our neighboring communities within Boulder County and as candidate Brown mentioned, across counties. Now, that includes sustainability, water issues, transportation, connecting our open space, transportation connectivity and even within the school districts. I've been very active within BBSD. In fact, I sat on the Transportation Task Force this spring to deal with the busing shortage. So I think there are lots of opportunities and I think the problems, as I said, the big problems that this community are faced, is going to be facing over the next five, 10 years and beyond are going to require collaboration if we're going to make any progress.
Thank you. The next question. Well, begin, we'll begin with candidate Keller. How would you work to make sure Louisville is a place that welcomes and values people of color and immigrants?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I belong to the, I've served on the Historical Commission, so I'm very familiar with the, the history of Louisville. And it was started by immigrants coming here looking for a job in the coal mines. So Louisville's always been a diverse community and I'd like to continue that going forward. I think that we need to come up with policies that would allow minority business owners incentives to move here and start businesses. I would, I would be supporting, supportive of those type of measures. Any type of disadvantaged business owners or residents, we should have policies to accommodate them. Thank you.
Candidate Most. Candidate Brown.
Sure, I'll go next.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Now I'm a little mixed up on my chart.
It's okay.
It would be candidate most.
Oh, okay. So I, I was glad that, it's a couple of years back, I believe, that, that Louisville introduced a resolution to, to recognize that we should be an inclusive community that welcomes everyone and where everyone feels comfortable. And I think we, you know, I think it's very important we think about inclusivity. We're not just thinking about immigrants and people of color. I know that was the question, but I think we also need to think about our, our elderly community. I think we need to think about our people with different abilities and disabilities, as I said. And I would like to see several things. One is, I think, in the housing department where we need to be, to provide opportunities that allow people from different backgrounds and different abilities to come to the community. I also would, would support economic incentives for people to start businesses. And I would also like to see us as a community provide more in cultural engagement that, that focuses on immigrant communities, communities of color and our, and other, as I said, communities, disabilities and communities with disabilities and also the elderly. Thank you.
Thank you. We will begin the fifth question with candidate Lay. What do you see as our community's most significant economic impacts from COVID? And what would you do to help Louisville businesses recover from the pandemic?
Thank you for the question. I think we have a remarkably resilient business community here and they have done quite well with cooperation between one another and with council, council having opened the, closed the main street to help the businesses there. And we've provided several kinds of grant programs that have helped. I think in the future, I'm on the Economic Sustainability, excuse me, Economic Vitality Committee. And what we're going to be doing is continuing to monitor that, improving the communications among businesses and trying to find ways to leverage the assets that we have, make some strategic investments in infrastructure in the city in order to enable our businesses recovery even better and for us to be an even stronger, fiscally sound city.
Thank you. Candidate Most.
Can you repeat the question for me? I was listening to Chris and I kind of got lost in his answer.
What do you see as our community's most significant economic impacts from COVID? And what would you do to help Louisville businesses recover from the pandemic?
So clearly, our small businesses across the community have been severely impacted. Some of them had to close for a while. Our, you know, some of them have, have had, you know, limited capacity to, to provide their services. And I think we have to, going forward, consider the fact that COVID is probably not a one-off and that this is something that we're going to have to grapple with in an ongoing way. These kind of health crises, crises. So I, I think we should think about, rather than a one-time response to COVID, creating economic resources that are available to our businesses, put a fund together that we can have basically on standby so that when our business community is hit by COVID, that we have the ability to provide sustained economic support to keep, to keep our businesses going. Because, you know, we rely on sales tax revenue in this community as a big percent of our overall revenue and we need to make sure that we're taking care of our businesses. So regardless of what crisis they face, we can support them.
Thank you. Candidate Brown.
Thank you, Carolyn. I appreciate it. You know, my background is in healthcare. And when the pandemic hit in my state job, I, I was detailed to the, to the governor's response for COVID statewide. So I did not expect when I joined council that I would be working on a global pandemic and helping our city respond. But it has been one of the, you know, the honors of my career. I would say that, you know, we have been, I've been very proud to be able to, to support our businesses with over a million dollars, business and businesses and families with over a million dollars of support to, in grants and, and economic assistance to help them stay in Louisville. I've also been very proud to support different business assistance packages, which have helped to retain and recruit different, different businesses within color, within Louisville. And we really need to do more of that to try to fill some of the vacant space that, that we have and continue to recruit people and, and redouble our efforts.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Candidate Keller.
Yes, thank you very much. COVID was very difficult for all the businesses in Louisville and also across the nation. And I think Louisville, Louisville and the City Council did a great job by shutting down the downtown district. I spoke with many business owners and they said that was a game changer for their business and kept them open. I would love to see that continue and make a, maybe a pedestrian walkway where you shut down the majority of the traffic downtown and allow pedestrians to go down there and frequent our local businesses. I'm not sure what, there may be logistics problems in diverting traffic. But I believe that the Small Business District downtown is the heart and soul of Louisville and I'd love to see it sustained throughout any future crises. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will start with candidate Most. Do you support police, mental health, co responder programs? Why or why not?
Absolutely. I think it is a brilliant problem. We have a fantastic police department here in Louisville. I think we're very lucky to to live in a town where we have committed professional officers and we ask an awful lot of them and I don't necessarily think we should be asking them to become mental health experts and professionals in dealing with those kind of crises. So I believe it would be a fantastic addition. I would support that and would love to see, you know, what kind of impacts that would have on our town, on our community and also in terms of, you know, supporting our police to really do the, the work that they're trained to do and keeping us safe and keeping our community safe.
Thank you. Candidate Brown.
Thank you, Carolyn. Yeah, I'm a big supporter of co responder models and I've been a big supporter of the police department's efforts to add a, a social worker, a mental health worker to their, to their ranks. That has been a really important service and and that we've been able to provide to the community. And that, and that mental health worker comes from a community mental health center and it's a partnership that we have as a city developed with them. So, you know, we'd love to do more of that because too often people who have mental health crises end up in the judicial system when they really need to be in the mental health system. And so we can, we can do a lot more as a city with our first responders in order to make sure folks get the help and the care that they need.
Thank you. Candidate Lay, or no, wait, I'm sorry, candidate Keller. Didn't mean to leave you out.
Oh, no, that's, that's fine. Yes, I think the co responder initiative is a great idea. I mean, police officers have a difficult enough job the way it is right now without having to be an expert on mental health as well. And I would fully support that. I don't want to have any more incidences that we've seen across the nation with that, that type of conflict. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Lay.
Thank you. Our police currently in Louisville are, I think, on the cutting edge of mental health related issues and dealing with these in a holistic and humane and appropriate way. Police are often called, they're going to be called when it comes to a lot of mental health emergencies because those involve very serious self harm and harm to others. We have already in place as Councilmember Brown, but these co responder models and we are very lucky to have in the community, good training. We need to keep that up. We need to make sure that we are adequately funding the co responders and making sure that we do what we can to keep people out of the criminal justice system that don't belong in there, that really need assistance and help and support of our community. Thanks.
Thank you. For the next two questions, you will be allotted 1.5 minutes. What steps, and we will begin this one with candidate Brown. What steps have you taken to reduce your carbon footprint? What would you like to see Louisville do to reduce the city's footprint and advance more climate friendly policies and practices?
Thank you, Carolyn. I appreciate that. Personally, we try to, we reduce our carbon footprint in my house by limiting our driving. We have a hybrid vehicle that we take on long trips. When we, when we need to, we use LED lights in the house. And, and we are, we try to be very conscious about, you know, our plastic bag and basically don't use them anymore because of the, you know, we try to use reusable bags. And I've been a proud supporter of the Bag Initiative which passed last year and have been really excited to work to implement that on the sustainability side. So we need to do more as a city to increase our sustainability and our efforts there. You know, we have a new sustainability plan and we need to continue to try to implement those. But we can, we can do more and we can, and, and I, and I would like to be able to provide renewable energy for every citizen of Louisville. I supported an initiative on council last year that would have provided that. Unfortunately, the council chose to go in a different direction. But I would like to see that revived and I would like to see us continue to work with our energy partners to make renewable energy available for everyone.
Thank you. Candidate Keller.
Yes, thank you. We try to reduce our carbon footprint at home by recycling as much as possible using high efficiency appliances and rerouting rainwater to irrigate our, our plants in the backyard. I think things like that would help. Solar power is, is a huge game changer, I think. I believe this whole city should be, any city building should be totally 100% solar powered. We have it on RV. Not that that's a big game changer, but, but it is a start. And I do believe that solar wind energy is something we're going to need to do more of in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Lay.
Yes, as far as personal things that I do, my daughter's an educator in outdoor education and she has provided myriad tips for us about how to do this and to help us. But I've located my own business office relatively close in order to cut down the amount of driving that I have to do. We, like the elders, do composting and recycling and frankly need a smaller trash bin because we throw away the trash so little that we need to do that. Changed out our air conditioning units to be more sustainable and we're in the process of zero scapeing to a greater extent in our yard. But I am a big supporter of the Sustainability Action Plan and trying to move that forward and providing some incentives for people to rely to a greater extent on solar and other renewable energy sources in Louisville. Thanks.
Thank you. Candidate Most.
Well, my daughter started schooling me in sustainability when she was in at Coal Creek Elementary when they became a Green Star School. So certainly on the recycling and composting side, we've been doing that for a long time. I ripped out two thirds of the grass in my house years ago and zero escaped. I put in a swamp cooler instead of an air conditioner which uses very, very little energy and water. You don't even see, you don't even see it on the electric bill. So that has been a big important step for me. I've worked from home from 20 years, so I don't commute. So we really don't use the car that much. I taught my daughter to use the RTD buses when she was 10 and a half. And I do travel for business extensively, or I did before COVID and I would take the RTD buses. And I'm obsessive about turning off lights. My daughter and I live in a, we're lucky enough to live in a beautiful 2,000 square foot home, the two of us, which saved my life during COVID. Because I was trapped at home with my 16 year old daughter for a year, but I'm, I'm obsessively turning lights out. My house is always very dark. I just don't ever want a light on in a room when it's not being used. And of course, all the bulbs are LED and we will be converting our outside lights over to Dark Skies compliance ones in very near future.
Thank you. For the next question, we will begin with candidate Keller. This one also, you also have one, one and a half minutes to answer this question. When issues become contentious, it is usually because conflicting yet often valid, valid values. I'm going to start this again. When issues become contentious, it is usually because conflicting yet often valid values are involved. What strategies will you employ for hearing the diverse viewpoints of your community? What is your process for evaluating those various inputs you receive and making the final decision, being your vote?
Yeah, thank you very much for that question. I had to reprocess that. Yes, that always is a problem whenever you're trying to come up with a decision for a diverse group of people with different objectives and different ideas. I believe that the key is listening to everybody. You know, validating that their point is, is a valid point. Taking notes on those and then getting consensus, getting people together and discussing each point and trying to figure out a compromise between the differing views before you make a decision. Something that would take into account all perspectives before making a decision.
Thank you. Candidate Lay.
Yeah, that's a really good question. I said at the outset that I'm a problem solver. One of the things that I've gotten is training and mediation. I do that in my job. I'm litigator and provide advice to clients about employment, let it keep them out of trouble. And a lot of that is solving problems where there are conflicting values and conflicting positions. I think listening is of utmost importance. I think inviting people to the table, making sure you're very transparent about that and going out proactively and finding people who are stakeholders in the issues that are important to the city. And like candidate Keller, forging consensus is very important. But we need to not get personal, not get angry, focus on the problem, not the, the person or the position to have robust debate. And then I'm an evidence based decision maker. It's very important for that. And I think articulating your reasons for picking a position are really important for the community and having the give and take. And I can admit when I'm wrong and I can change my mind when I'm convinced. I think those, all of those things are really important when you're on a municipal city council.
Thank you. Candidate Most.
Well, I think that one of the things that's really important when you're an elected official, especially at a local level, is that you really do listen to your constituents and you do your best to represent their values when you serve in an elected capacity. You know, I mean, I, I have very strong feelings and opinions about a lot of things and I will argue for them very strongly until someone comes up with a better idea and then I'll argue for that one. But I think really as a representative, you have to listen to your constituents and you know, we live in a democracy and generally it's about the majority. And so I think, yes, you have to give everyone a chance to express their perspective, but in the end, we really have to represent what the majority of the community wants to see. And I'm, I think that's the most important thing that you can do in the city council. And unfortunately, I have watched the city council at times not do that, where I really believe that they're injecting, individuals are injecting their own particular values over the values of the community. And that is really, that was one of the things that really motivated me to run. I think it's truly important.
Thank you. Candidate Brown.
Thank you, Carolyn. Yeah, my, my ethos as a public servant is accessibility and availability. You know, if you're a constituent, you deserve a meeting or an email or a phone call. And even if I don't agree with that person, I believe that they have the right to be heard. And so I would, I would be more, I'm always try to make myself available to folks within Ward Three for coffee, for a phone call, respond to their emails. And, and it can be small things. You know, I really pride myself on being available when folks have issues with potholes, folks have issues with the drainage behind their house or, you know, some issue with the golf course. You know, these are, these are things that I, I will, I will go out and meet with folks and listen and look, see it for myself and then go and advocate on behalf of, you know, constituents. That's, that's a really important thing to me so that I can be the best representative of folks in our community. When it comes to sort of the trade offs of different policy options, you know, evidence is important. But then considering sort of the upsides versus the downsides of any given option. And who, you know, who gets helped and who gets hurt and thinking about what's the best thing for our community as a whole is my ethos.
Thank you. The next question will begin with candidate Lay. What role, if any, should Louisville government play in ensuring a broader range of housing options for its current and future residents?
There, that's a very important question that we've been working with and wrestling with right now. First, I think we need to recognize that as we talked about at the very beginning, we need to revisit issues of weather and some places in our community. We should have slightly more density and transportation oriented development. We have in other places mixed use. Sam's Club strikes me as one of those places where we might want to reconsider at some point the possibility of that. I think we need to work toward the 12% permanently affordable housing goal that we have. And that's one that I helped launch years ago when I advocated for it through the Consortium of Cities. And we need to work with our partners regionally.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Candidate Most.
As I mentioned before, I think it's really important for going to be a truly inclusive community to provide housing options that work for everybody. And you know, there's a, I've heard, I've talked to a lot of constituents as I've been campaigning and there's a lot of concern about high density housing and people's like, oh, we don't need more, any more people in this community. And I, I just think that's a really I just think that's not a great way to be. That doesn't represent the values of our community of being a really wonderful and inclusive community. And I think we need to look at options. Chris mentioned them. I mentioned them earlier. I think there are areas in our community, particularly in Caslen Corridor, close to transportation hub, where we can be creative and innovative and maintain the character of our town and add economic vitality and really make the, make it a better place for everybody without the folks that have lived here for a long time in single family homes somehow feeling like it's detrimental to the community.
Thank you. Candidate Brown.
Thank you, Carolyn. Yeah, I, I am very sensitive to this, this. Thank you, Carolyn. Yeah, I, I am very sensitive to this, this uh, question, just because it you know, I feel like, you know, when my family moved to Louisville, Louisville was an affordable place that you could, you could buy a home as a middle-class family. And increasingly, I think, you know, middle-income folks and especially low-income folks and even middle-income folks are, are sort of priced out of buying in our community. So we have to have more diverse options. We have to have more affordable options. And, and I think as candidate Most said, you know, there are places where we need to think about what is the right mixture of commercial and residential, you know, places where we can, or we can leverage some of the existing infrastructure to really make more affordable options for folks. So that families like mine was forty years ago can continue to, to come here and make our community a really vibrant place.
Thank you. Candidate Keller.
Thank you, Jillian. Uh, yeah, I, I think the city absolutely has an obligation to its residents to provide as many affordable housing options as possible for all economic levels of the population, whether it's through affordable housing or renting. And I'd prefer to see more affordable housing than renting because you really can't build equity renting and move up into the middle class. I mean, that's the American dream. And I would like to see more affordable housing for, for low-income people or residents. And I think that there's all kinds of options that we can come up with that are acceptable to, to the, those that want more open space and to those that want more development. It just, it's a compromise that we're gonna have to work on. Thank you.
Thank you. The next round will begin with candidate Most. Louisville has seen economic successes, but also suffered losses. The city was forced to furlough employees during the pandemic. What goals and policies would you like to see embraced to facilitate a more resilient and diverse economic base?
Well, the city's actually doing quite well. I mean, I, I think that the sitting city council made some tough choices to try to cut back to make sure that we were well-positioned with COVID, and they did a good job and we're, we received money from the federal government. So I think we're in good shape. I think the place where we really have to focus. In fact, w- w- we have, in, in some senses, in some senses, the biggest struggle is we can't find people to fill the open positions now. But I think the place where I really see the economic opportunities is in redeveloping some of the areas that are now underutilized and are quite frankly, empty or blighted. And I think that the city council has to be really proactive. I think rather than sitting back and waiting for developers to come to us or for the property owners to come to us, I think we have to be proactive. We have to clarify the vision with the community in terms of what we really want to see, and then go seek out partners and work with them. If it's through public-private partnerships, if it's just through, you know, direct collaboration to bring the kind of economic vitality that we want to this community.
Thank you. Candidate Keller.
Yes, thank you. Um, I think Maxine made a good point there about funding talented workers to fill, fill vacant jobs that we have. I think I would love to see funding put into uh, reeducating our population to, to uh, get more skilled workers in those type of jobs, whether it's through uh, training apprenticeships or through uh, educational courses. I think we, we need to retrain our workforce for the future and any any type of new technology that, that would help us and the ecology would be where we'd want to put that funding. Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to make a correction and go back to candidate Brown. Did I read? I left you out.
No worries. I'll go in whatever order you want. I appreciate it. Now, my, I, I, we, candidate Most is correct. The city had to make some very difficult decisions last year. We had no idea exactly what we were looking at in terms of the financial impact of, of COVID. And it was, and it was difficult. I think we were fortunate that the economy rebounded, at least for some, more quickly than we expected, and our sales tax has recovered fairly well, which allows us to provide high-quality services. I think in terms of creating a more resilient economic base, I agree that, you know, economic recruitment has to continue to be a forefront. We need to do a better job of selling Louisville as an, as an attractive place to live and work, you know, to going out into other communities, meeting with potential employers or people who want to, you know, start businesses here and telling them about our low taxes and about our, just, you know, great quality of life here. That's, that's what I would like to, to bring and continue to grow in, at council if re-elected.
Thank you. Candidate Lay. You are on mute.
Yikes. Sorry about that. You knew it's gonna happen here. Um, several things. One is that I think we need to be a community that doesn't over-regulate business. We need to be consistent with our values of sustainability and others that are important, but we need to be consistent. We need to be transparent. We need to be fast enough. And those are things that we need to work on. It's one of the things I want to work on during your second term if I'm re-elected. And that is setting the table for businesses to succeed is really where we're best suited. The big, I think, encouraging the ballot measures in fall to make the underpasses that are gonna transform or help to transform this city. Very good thing. I'm on the LRC, which is the Louisville Revitalization Commission, and I'm on the Economic Vitality Commission. Those are Committee of Council, which will help me to be in a position to make those things happen. Thank you.
Thank you. We will begin the next question with candidate Brown. And I would like to make this question a one-point-five-minute question. Give you one-point-five minutes to respond to it. What are the three most crucial challenges facing Louisville today? What ideas do you have for addressing them?
Wow, that's a lot. Thank you. I, so my priorities in Louisville, and I think the biggest challenges that we face are continuing to, you know, take meaningful climate action. You know, climate change is a, is a, is a, is a crisis. And, and we as Louisville, in Louisville, can do our part to, to, to fight that crisis, right? So continuing to make our community more sustainable, requiring sustainable development, working toward renewable energy for every house and every business in Louisville. You know, those are, those are some of my ideas and things that I would like to see happen. I think, second of all, economic vitality and continuing to have a vital economic base here in, in Louisville. I'll continue to, to support that. My idea, my ideas again are, you know, making sure that we are recruiting new businesses to fill some of the spaces that have gone vacant recently to make sure that we are building our sales tax base and our community remains vibrant and not ended. And then, you know, third, I would say that I would like to make sure that we are continuing to to, to work to make housing affordable. It, it continues to be a problem across Boulder County. And, and we've, we've talked a bit about that already. So thank you very much.
Thank, thank you. Candidate Keller.
Yes, thank you for the question. I believe that the three main problem, or three main issues that we need to, to tackle is managing dwindling resources such as water and energy. That's gonna be a problem in the future going forward, especially if the climate keeps getting warmer. Training our workforce, so we have skilled labor that would draw businesses here. A lot of businesses are looking for a community that, that's enjoyable to live in, has a skilled workforce to fulfill their job needs. And then the third is, is finding the revenue that would fund the city sufficiently to, 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 to keep all these initiatives and, and, and objectives going. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Lay.
Thanks. As I said at the very outset, preserving what's important in, in what's special in Louisville is critical. That stewardship of our open space and our trails, that's maintenance of our trails. It's trying to address the airport noise issue, which we're doing right now and need to be continuing to work the new roundtable and in other ways to help mitigate those kinds of quality of life impediments here. And, you know, we've got great things to offer in Louisville. We've got great services. We've got very competitive utility rates and so forth. But I think going forward, we're gonna need to spend, we need to focus on our investments in strategic infrastructure, you know, help businesses to revitalize and to also make our city more focused, even more focused on, on sustainable development in, in a way that is not going to discourage overmuch the economic livelihoods of people here in elsewhere. Thanks.
Thank you. Candidate Most.
So I, I would say the first thing, like my, many of my fellow candidates here, is really sustainable living, and that's from development, updating existing infrastructure, commercial spaces, schools, homes, everything. We really need to focus on the fact that we're gonna be challenged with energy resources and particularly water resources. And we have to think strategically and smartly about how we're gonna handle that and how we're gonna work with our neighboring communities to really solve those problems. It's not something we can do on our own. I, the second thing is building a thriving, inclusive community. We do have challenges. We like to think of ourselves that way, but we have work to do, whether that's inclusivity based on race or religion or ethnicity or abilities and disabilities, gender identity, you name it. I mean, I think we, we need to think about structurally what we can do as a community to address those needs and to provide services for people for everybody. So everyone feels comfortable and safe living in Louisville. And then the third thing I think is really critical infrastructure. You know, I know there's a, the bond issue that's coming up this fall, which I support. I believe we need to make, make our community accessible to people, whether they're on bicycles, whether they're in wheelchairs, whether they're school kids who need to cross streets safely. So we need to think about how all of these people can operate within our community in a safe way.
Thank you. We'll begin the next question with candidate Keller. Some residents talk about the need to make Louisville more affordable. Should that be a goal? If yes, what are some of the, what are some of the barriers to affordability?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Yes, that is absolutely a, a goal. The barriers to affordability is you need the land, which, you know, is in short supply. We don't have a lot of land. You have to make tough choices between open space and development or rezoning, which is another one issue I talked about earlier. Change the zoning laws so you can do the accessible dwelling units, like I believe Boulder does in their, their city. Or tiny houses. I've, I've talked with a lot of young residents that don't want two, three thousand foot square foot houses. You know, five hundred is good enough. So economically sized or efficient housing is probably a better term than tiny house, but a small community like that might be acceptable for, for a lot of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Lay.
We are part of a larger economy, and that's part of the difficulty here because it's not as if we can wave a magic wand and solve the problem of affordability. What I think we can do is several things. One is, I think we need to meet and take steps soon and consistently toward reaching our goal of twelve percent affordable housing. And we do that by mixture of incentives, changing some zoning and encouraging transportation-oriented development, particularly in the areas that will be redeveloped. And, you know, I think those are, those are barriers to affordability. And I think we need to continue to encourage our efforts to welcome new people to Louisville. Thanks.
Candidate Most.
I think it's fascinating that this question has come up over and over and over again. Clearly, it is very much on the minds of our residents, and I think that's a good thing. As I said, I, you know, I think we have to be realistic about what it means to have affordable housing. And again, I think we need to extend that not to just affordable housing, but to accessible housing. It's not just people with economic limitations. It's people with disabilities. It's, it's our older community. I mean, you know, I was recently reading the Denver Post how, how difficult it is for senior citizens to actually be able to afford living in, in Colorado. So I, I think the only way that we can do this is to proactively work with developers to bring the kind of housing we want into this community. And I think the only practical way to do that is with, with mixed-use designated areas where we, we change the zoning so we can do mixed use, and we insist on retail and business before we allow housing to be developed.
Thank you. Candidate Brown.
Thank you, Karen. I appreciate it. I I, I think, you know, the key barrier, I think that it, it is really this, this problem of Louisville is part of a larger housing market, a, a part of a larger economy. And, you know, Louisville needs to do its part. But we are also at the mercy of the city of Boulder, city of Longmont, and, and the sort of policies that they enact. And so, you know, regional approaches to affordability are gonna be important. So, you know, Louisville coming to the table and saying, we are willing, you know, to hold developers accountable, make sure that, you know, they are putting in affordable housing units, but you all need to do your part too. And we can't lose sight of our values, right? Protecting open space, protecting the environment. And no one is saying that, but it's, 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 those are the things that are important to me. But, but continuing that regional collaboration and dialogue will be a key part of this.
Thank you. The next question will begin with councillor Lay. If you could change one thing in Louisville's zoning code, what would it be?
I think, as I alluded before, we've had a period of time where we've focused on single-family homes and really not doing anything or very little on encouraging mixed use and certain amount of residential targeted to certain areas in the city. I think on the west side of town, particularly west of Caslen, I think I would support changing zoning such that we can allow some residential development over there that we really need for affordability, for supporting business, and for creating a vibrant center over there that draws people economically and creates some activation or center over there that draws people economically and creates some activation or economic and social activity over there. Thanks.
Thank you. Candidate Most.
I guess two things. One is the more practical is to rezone parts of the McAsland corridor for mixed use development. And the magic wand wish that I could rezone would be Redtail Ridge to make sure that the existing open, the, the open space that was open space when storage tech had their facility there would remain open space.
Okay. Candidate Brown.
Thank you, Carolyn. I appreciate it. I think it's important for us to continue to maintain historic character of our downtown. And, you know, there are steps that we can take as city council to preserve that. I've been a real strong supporter of historic preservation programs downtown to make sure that our historic houses and buildings are, are preserved for future generations. It's an important part of our identity as a, as a community. And, you know, it, it does, it does, a little part of me dies when I see some of those buildings being demolished. So I would like to continue to, to try to protect those through zoning, zoning and the old town overlay.
Thank you. Candidate Keller.
Yes, thank you for the, for the question. I seem to have lost my video, but I would like to see the zoning change, the main zoning change would be allow or change from single, single family zoning to multifamily zoning. I mean, there's, in the past, you've had multiple generation, generations living on the same lot. And if you had multiple structures, if you're allowed to have multiple structures on one lot, you could also do that in the future. And that would maximize the residents dwelling units without creating urban sprawl. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate. Did I get mixed up again? Candidate Lay. Wait, wait a minute. So candidate most, I am all mixed up and I apologize to everybody. Who would do that question go to? That's it. We're done. Okay. I'm ready for the next question. I apologize again. There is a question, and this one will begin with candidate most. There is a question on the ballot asking for authorization to levy debt through an increase in property tax in order to finance specific transportation improvements. For those watching, make a case for voting either for or against the question on the ballot.
Oh, I support the ballot measure. I believe that this is critical infrastructure that we need to make our community safe for pedestrians, for school kids, for our senior citizens, for bike riders. We've, we've just had too many dangerous accidents and at, at key locations, the community has identified these locations as needing transportation upgrades. And the way that this ballot measure reads, the, the, I believe it's allocated for $50 million. But the city council has allocated, I believe, one and a half million dollars a year towards paying for the, for the bond. And I think there's another $18 million coming from the revitalization committee, if I'm correct. So this is going to have a minimal impact on our property taxes and it's going to provide needed infrastructure that our community has asked for.
Thank you. Councillor Candidate Brown.
Thank you, Carolyn. Yes, I also support the ballot measure. I was proud to support putting it on the, on the ballot as serving on council. I agree that, you know, the one thing that we hear about in, is traffic safety, the ability to to really to cross major roads such as South Boulder Road at Main Street or Dillon Road at the Powerline Trail safely. I've made traffic safety a real priority of mine and have been, and have advocated successfully for traffic improvements that have made pedestrians safety a priority, crosswalks and the like here in Ward Three. And so I support the underpass campaign because I, I believe that this is infrastructure that we need that will make our, our pedestrian bike and folks with disabilities even safer when, when you, when using, when using our, our pathways. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Keller.
Yes, thank you, Jer, Carolyn. Yeah, I support the measure. I applaud the city council for starting this initiative. I think it's, it's a long, long overdue. And I don't know the full, full extent of the measure. I would like to see more electric vehicles in there as well to cut the carbon footprint. But transportation infrastructure is a critical need of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Lay.
Thanks. I support wholeheartedly the measure and I do for a number of reasons. This is a transformative project. It is going to, as a number of others have said, it's going to help in the underpasses. We hope to build sooner rather than later. It's going to improve safety. It's going to increase connectivity different parts of the city, which is going to help in turn to activate some additional economic activity. It's going to connect our trail system. It's going to help, we hope and we believe it's going to reduce people's reliance on ways of getting around it that's been relying on. And so from that standpoint, I think it just hits on all cylinders and it's a great project for that reason.
Okay, thank you. We have time probably for two more questions. This question will begin with candidate Brown. Lewisville is a community with a strong history. Its old town business and commercial area and the nearby residential neighborhoods contain diverse architecture and unique appeal. What is important to preserve and what should happen to balance the history with the present and future?
Thank you, Carolyn. I appreciate that question. As I mentioned earlier, reservation in downtown is a, has been a real priority of mine and one, something that I would like to see the, the council continue to make a priority. Our historic preservation program, I believe, is working really well. You know, we, we have really great economic incentives for landowners and building owners to, to preserve historic properties. And, you know, one of the things that I'm really proud of is a historic preservation grant that, that the the council approved with my support, my wholehearted support on Main Street that will not only maintain the historic character of the, of a particular building, which used to, to house the Waterloo, among other things over the years. But will also transform the space into a really vital piece of the, of the community and Main Street. So I would like to continue to see that program expanded and, and, and continue.
Thank you. Candidate Keller.
Yes, thank you for the question. Yes, I believe that the historical structures in Lewisville is part of the charm and the appeal of our town. And I'd like to see that expanded. I, I agree with candidate Brown that, that, that program has been a success. I've served on the Historic Preservation Commission for the past year and a half and landmarked my own home. And I, I would like to see it expanded to more residents or more buildings in Lewisville. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Lay.
Thanks. And I do want to make a shout out to my fellow candidate Keller, because he, he has served on that commission and I was one of those who helped to, to put him on there. And I think he's did a great job. The program for historic preservation is a jewel in our crown in this town. Very seldom do communities tax themselves for the purpose of preserving their history. And it's not just Main Street or commercial buildings. It's of course all through Old Town particularly, but not even just that. We've done some wonderful programs and I thank the historical commission for helping us with that. I've been a big supporter of that and those neighborhoods are part of the, both the history and culture of the community, but also the economic vitality and charm of the city.
Thank you. Candidate Most.
Thank you. You know, it's interesting. When I moved to Lewisville 15 years ago, the downtown was not really nearly as nice as it is today. I think that we've done a fantastic job as a community. I think the city council and the historic preservation committee has done a great job and I, I think we need to continue to do that. It's an important part of our community. It, it's, it's this unique place and people love to be there. It feels good. So I think that's fantastic. I would also honestly like to see not so much historic preservation, but neighborhood preservation be extended further across the community. I live up on the Mesa off of near Washington and South Boulder Road and we're seeing a lot of, you know, pop ups and build outs and some scrape downs and rebuilds. And even some of those houses don't really feel like they fit within the community. And, you know, they don't really maintain that character. So even some of our communities from the seventies and the eighties, I think, could use a little bit of attention in that regard to set some standards. So we have this continuity that works across our entire community.
Okay. This is the last question. And it will begin with candidate Keller. What are three words you would use to describe Lewisville?
Yeah, thank you, Carolyn. I guess the three words I'd, I'd use is friendly, diverse and quaint.
Thank you. Candidate Lay.
I think I would use the terms welcoming. I think I would use the terms improving. And I would use the term small town character, which is three words in a row. It really is. Thanks.
Thank you. Candidate Most.
First word that comes to my mind is charming. And I think comfortable. And the third, what I, I would use is two words, great potential.
Thank you. Candidate Brown.
Thank you, Carolyn. Yeah, I, my, my vision encapsulated into three words for Lewisville is vibrant, sustainable and inclusive.
Thank you. That's it for the questions. Now for our closing statements, we will begin those with candidate Lay. You have a minute.
Chris, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Lewisville is a great city. It can be a better city. I've been a part of some wonderful transformation projects in the last few years and sustainability, sustainability action plan and some infrastructure that we needed. And I'm looking forward to helping to improve both the ability to serve our community and its basic services, protecting our, our open spaces and maintaining them, being good stewards, continuing to have good water and sustaining ourselves environmentally and really working hard on our economic vitality. Strategic plan to try to make Lewisville strong and able to provide what is good and to improve it in terms of a welcoming community to people who are not here yet and to those who we need to do right by. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Most.
I'm really looking forward to working on the city council because I believe that as I just said, Lewisville is full of so much potential. And I think that we have the character of our community, the availability of recreational spaces and open spaces and our trail connectivity is something that's really wonderful. It's one of the reasons I moved here. And so what I really want to see is is the community looking forward to how we become more inclusive, more sustainable, more accessible and provide more opportunities for people in a way that really is consistent with a, a vision of a clean, green future where we not just talk about sustainability, but actually put really high standards into place. And that we provide the kind of bold leadership we need for Lewisville to grow and continue to be an amazing place to live for decades to come.
Thank you. Candidate Brown.
Thank you, Carolyn. I appreciate it. You know, my vision, of course, is vibrant, sustainable Lewisville. Obviously, I'm, I'm really focused on continuing to make our business community as vibrant as possible, our economic community to continue to protect open space and make our community sustainable. And I've been really proud of my record in protecting open space, particularly in Ward Three in Lewisville over the last two years. And then inclusivity. And I've been really proud to support Lewisville's first ever proclamation that declared June Pride Month here in Lewisville. I've been so proud to support the work to make of our Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee. And I will continue to make sure that Lewisville is the place, the best place to live and work. And it is an honor to serve on council and I hope to be able to do that for another four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Keller.
Yes, thank you, Carolyn, for the question. Hang on, I just lost my focus there. Well, it's a question again. I'm sorry.
It's not a question. It's your closing statement.
Oh, my closing statement is sorry. Yeah, if I'm fortunate enough to be elected to city council, I will devote all my attention. I promise to try to solve as many issues as possible. There are a lot of complex problems facing Lewisville and ambitious programs that need, need the full attention of all council members. Hopefully I can be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the League, I would like to thank our candidates, not only for their participation in tonight's forum, but also for their participation in the democratic process, running for office and serving as an elected official is hard work. And we really appreciate your efforts. Thank you also to our League candidate forum volunteers, including the League's invaluable operations manager, Mandy Nuku, Elizabeth Crowe, our core president, our co-president, Josephine Porter and Peggy Leach. This forum will be available for viewing. Please go to the League's website at l w v b c dot org for the link. And finally, thank you to all of the Boulder County voters participating tonight as viewers. It's up to all of us to make sure we respect and work to protect our democratic processes. Too many people have suffered and succeeded in, and succeeded in the struggle to win these rights for us not to use them, succeeded in the struggle to win these rights for us not to use them. It starts with being an informed and active voter. To check out other important issues affecting our community, check out our League voter information website, vote411.org for all the election information you would need. The League of Women Voters The League of Women Voters of Boulder County works throughout the year to help empower voters and defend democracy. If you want to lend your time and skills to encourage civic engagement for all people in a nonpartisan manner, please join us. All the information you need is available at W W W dot L W V B C dot org. Have a great evening. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.